I call the Monday, 2/25/2018 work session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Tonight, we have a joint meeting with our Planning Commission, and thank you all for being here. And Chairman Williams, I'll give you time to call your meeting to order and call the roll.
Good. Planning Commissioners, it's indeed a pleasure for us to be here with the joint meeting of the City Council. Please answer as the Secretary across the room. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Present.
Commissioner Hoffler?
Present.
Commissioner Gee?
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner Ritz?
Present.
Six members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, thank you all for taking time here on the first Monday of summer, I think it is, and to meet with us. We've got a lot of work to do tonight, so, Dr. Patton?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, and Planning Commission. The first presentation this evening, Mr. Joseph C. Hines, Principal and Director of Economic Development for the Timmins Group, will share the Timmins Group tier system. The Timmins Group has developed and implemented a Timmins Group tier system now adopted by the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and used throughout the region to guide how landowners should strategically invest in getting a site ready for economic development success. The Timmins Group knows the odds for closing a deal significantly increase with the higher level of preparedness and work closely with clients to take legitimate steps toward developing the property for implementing this system. We also have with us tonight from the Timmins Group, Mr. Larry Berry, engineer from the Virginia Beach office, and Mr. Hines comes to us from their headquarters in Richmond, Virginia. The second presentation, the Planning Department staff, will present a series of briefings and updates with very important topics. Mr. Brian Swetts, Planning Administrator, will present a report on resiliency efforts in Portsmouth, which includes information on the issue of sea level rise. Following Mr. Swetts, Mrs. Meg Pittinger, Environmental Manager, will present a report on the impact of flood regulations within the city's historic districts, as well as downtown designated review district. Our final presentation, our Planning Director, Mr. Bob Baldwin, will present a briefing on the zoning ordinance rewrite project, which includes a proposed rezoning concept for the D2 form the base code district. Mr. Hines?
Is that my stopwatch? Thank you all very much for your time tonight. And second of all, thank you all for your service. I know public service and the fashion in which you are committing your time and your resources to being here to make the city a better place is a tough commitment sometimes. Sometimes it's a thankless job, as well as Planning Commissioners, because you're making tough decisions to encapsulate the best opportunities for the future. And sometimes those are painful decisions, and sometimes they're very positive decisions. So, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight. It's been a pleasure getting to meet with the Port Commission earlier, as well as the EDA, and we're excited about the opportunity to come here and talk to you tonight. When I look at what's going on in Portsmouth, as we go through a presentation, you're kind of going to hear a couple of consistent themes. One is about the fast-track process for development, how that's getting to be so critical for development success today. Two, collaboration. You know, economic development is a team game. Everybody needs to collaborate on that and needs to keep the focus on the mind. What is your Super Bowl? What is your World Series you're trying to win? You've got pre-prospect planning and post-prospect execution. The day the prospect shows up, it's like the beginning of a football game or a basketball game, where you are on a clock and you need to be able to respond in a timely manner. And speed to market. Those are some very consistent themes that we hear and see throughout our life as what we do. You know, we have the benefits of turning about six to 10 of these projects, if not more, a year. And so, by virtue of us being in the seat we're in, we get to see those consistencies across the board of what makes sites and infrastructure and localities ready to go when it comes to economic development. When I look at Portsmouth, I see a huge upside potential. I've lived down in the Newport News area for a number of years, commuted across the 664 Bridge to help build some wastewater treatment plants from Hampton Roads and Handation District, build some water infrastructure for the city of Chesapeake. I've always thought this area had great, great potential, and I just see where you are today with a comprehensive, cohesive, and committed economic development approach, you can really take advantage of that. As I was driving in today, you know, one of the things that kind of hit me was there are no bridges to get into and out of Portsmouth, and that's a huge asset in this area. So, there are no tunnels, I'm sorry, not no bridges, no tunnels to get in and out. Urbanization for millennials. Really, it's kind of starting to see a trend where millennials want to be back in urbanized areas. They don't want to drive cars. They want to be within an easy commute to and from their work area. And with your ferry systems you have going across to Norfolk, I think there's a huge potential there as far as that's concerned. So, you have all the sites and infrastructure in place, I think, to take advantage of all that moving forward. So, I'm going to walk through my presentation. I'll cover it in about a little bit over 20 minutes and try to leave about five minutes on the backside for questions, if that's okay. It was my understanding I had about 30 minutes allotted, if that works for you all. So, I'll give you a little bit of an overview on Timmins Group. I'll talk about some trends that we're seeing in economic development, and really, who is your target audience? There are definitely different players in the game, like you have to collaborate on their side, the Winter Project. There are definitely certain players that you need to cater to on the other side that have all slightly different objectives. Understanding your target markets and your product, and then preparing your community for success. And as I said, consistently, you're going to hear about fast track and speed to market really matter in today's industry, and I'll show you some graphs that show you that. For those of you who aren't familiar with Timmins Group, we were founded in 1953, based out of Richmond, Virginia. We do have Virginia Beach office. We've been here for, I guess, about 10 or 12 years now in the Hampton Roads area, and it's really starting to see explosive growth in that office for our firm. We're over 500 employees. We are engineering news records top 25, or top 500 for the last 20 years, and we have pretty extensive experience. For over 20 years, we've had dedicated economic development practice for our locales. So, we did work in 45 states over the last few years. And why does that matter? It matters because we can see trends, we see best practices for other communities that make them successful, and we try to implement those for our current clients. We try to understand the best practices for private industry, as well as public entities, and try to merge them to give you the best opportunities for success moving forward. This is just a list of services that's in the presentation that you have, but again, we built our model around trying to be responsive to our clients, using technology as an accelerator with geographic information systems to help, using platforms, whether drones or other visualization software, to help prospects understand where they're going to build and how that would impact your city and what that would look like before you actually go to construction. So, where can this lead us? As I mentioned before, it's a team sport. Everybody needs to come to win. We did a master plan for what ultimately became the Rolls-Royce site, just outside of Petersburg, Virginia. At the time, we completed that master plan in August of 2006, we had no idea that Rolls-Royce was out there. They show up about five months later, and then we go through a pretty extensive negotiating process, of which the master plan and our preliminary engineering report became the basis of a $21 million incentive package to be put on the table for Rolls-Royce for infrastructure, of which we had quantified all those elements. And it was very important that they understood what that cost was, what that risk was, and what the cost to the taxpayer would be and what that return to the taxpayer would be. You have to be publicly defendable in your decisions that you make from an infrastructure investment perspective, are you going to get that return, and is it worthwhile to the taxpayers' money to do that? So, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, there really is kind of two elements to how we look at economic development. One is pre-prospect planning, okay? That's going through and understanding everything you can about your locality, about your infrastructure, about your sites, before that prospect shows up. And to be quite frank, you can't wait 16, 19 days to do a study after the prospect shows up, because when they show up, you're on the clock. You have to be very responsive, and a 48 to 72-hour turnaround sometimes, in a fast-case scenario, really no longer than a week. When they submit these RFIs, they want answers and they want them tomorrow. Part of the reason is they're making decisions that are giving them a competitive business advantage, and when a company makes a decision to move, that decision needs to be executed as quickly as possible, and they need to be up and running as quickly as possible from that process. So, that's doing stuff like due diligence, what we call your site eliminators. It's really not a site selection game, it's a site elimination game. Looking at your infrastructure and your site requirements compared to your target industries, where do they align, where do they not align? Wild waste time pursuing an industry of which the site is not going to align to that particular industry. Timelines for implementation. Any improvements you make need to be consistent and coincide with their ability to build a facility out of the ground, and that's usually 12 months or less, okay? If you have to do any road improvements or water and sewer improvements to accommodate that particular prospect, you need to be able to guarantee to them that you can coincide it with them going operational in their particular building. And then, the cultural resource and permitting issues up front. A lot of those things can stop projects dead in the tracks. A $250 million project just pulled out of Richmond, Virginia, because they have a delay on the cultural resource side of things, and they can't deal with that issue, or didn't deal with that issue up front. And then, what we call post-prospect execution. Again, the day the prospect shows up, you're on a clock, you need to respond, your competition is trying to beat you, you need to be in position to beat your competition. And I can tell you right now, after pursuing a couple of projects, and we helped pursue Toyota in North Carolina, a project is never yours to lose, it's always yours to win. And you have to keep that mindset moving forward. So, from a site selection and economic developer's perspective, prospects are looking at regions, okay? When they come here, they've already done their logistics and they understand, but they're also looking at Norfolk, they're looking at Suffolk, they're looking at Virginia Beach, they're looking regionally at what can accommodate them. So, you're somewhat competing with your neighbors, because some people call it "co-opetition", is what they call it. But the reality is, people are not coming here just exclusively for Portsmouth, they're coming here for the region because they see regional assets. It's at that point in time, you get to show your competitive advantages. As I mentioned, no tunnels leaving this area from logistics distribution perspective, a natural advantage. You get the opportunity to show that. They probably aren't going to figure that out until they show up and you point that out to them. Projects are moving in months now. They're not moving in 18- to 24-month cycles, they're moving in two-to-three-to-five-month cycles now, because again, that competitive advantage. You need ready-to-go sites, and the reality is, publicly controlled sites rule. I think one of the things that, in talking with Robert, that I'm excited about for City of Portsmouth, is the fact that y'all have the ability to control significant chunks of decent real estate, and you can do a hold, a buy-and-hold play from the standpoint, you actually can wait for the appropriate entity, for the appropriate project to show up. You're not a turn-and-burn like a developer, and you've got to make money because you've got the bank riding you on turning that property as quickly as possible. The Internet has transformed that process, like for everything else. Technology is an accelerator for anybody who's ever read the book Good to Great by Jim Collins. He points that out about successful businesses and successful entities. Look at what Jeff Bezos has done with technology, okay? You've got to understand how that plays into what you're doing. And then, incentives do matter after you become a finalist. Where does this end up at the end of the day for you? About 100% of your success is about 70% to 80% out of your control. You don't know what that decision-making process is going on in the back of your mind. Nobody knew Akio Toyoda had a childhood experience in Alabama, they kind of tipped the scale for Alabama versus North Carolina, despite his North American colleagues' recommendation. So, you've got to focus on that 20% to 30% you can control, and the rest of it, you really can't control. So, from VDP's perspective, what matters? Sometimes building spec space matters, because about 60% to 70% of projects showing up are looking for existing buildings. Sometimes that gets turned, and they leave with a redevelopment site or greenfield site, but that's really what they're looking for. They're looking for about 100,000 square foot, as far as logistics distribution is concerned. I think you have interchange built a 200,000-square-foot facility here, which I believe they have somewhere around 40,000 square foot that's still available in that. But there's really some, there's a lack of ready-to-go product throughout the state. We formed the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program. We have a committee meeting next week on that, of which the state codified our tearing system for evaluation of sites, and they're using that to help evaluate how they're going to advance sites throughout the state of Virginia. So, what are some of the things that matter here as far as this is concerned? When we look at Site Selectors Magazine, they list their top 10 criteria. And the important thing to recognize here, and this is from 2012, is that really, six of those top 10 are somewhat controllable on your own local level. So, you have a little bit of the bull by the horns, as long as you can proactively address those elements. The big change really from 2012 to 2016 is workforce skills has moved up that scale. And again, when you look at the trends of millennials wanting to go back to urbanized areas, and the fact y'all have a nice ferry going across to Norfolk. ADP, I believe, gives their employees an incentive to use ferry tolls and/or other tolls to get across the water. You can attract workforce here, and I think that's an element that's very strong about Portsmouth. With the redevelopment of Portsmouth, you can attract a very strong workforce that can help give you that competitive advantage moving forward. But you also need to keep in mind, all these other elements you need to work out as well. And so, if you can align all those elements, start attracting that workforce, which I think you're pretty close to right now, you're going to see a little bit of an exponential growth here over the next, I think, 10 to 20 years, if I'm placing my bets on Portsmouth. So, what do you need to be prospect-ready? Amazon built two 1 million-square-foot facilities outside of Richmond, Virginia. They have a two-hour or less delivery business model in place right now, okay? They want to go close to where their market is, all right? The interesting thing about this was, they built these two facilities here, three localities in Virginia went to Seattle to meet with their executives. Each locality got 15 minutes with the Amazon executives. Having gone through business school, I completed an MBA in executive program at Duke University. We do our case studies. Two pages, executive summary, three or four pages worth of supporting documentation, but most business decisions are made with a 15-minute PowerPoint or less. They don't like the information they see, they send you back to go do additional analysis, but it's those basic presentations that they make their business decisions off of. And this was validated with that process with Amazon. So, why does this really matter? We started tracking from the time a Robert Moore or a local economic developer is contacted until some of these decisions were made, and these were pretty big announcements. So, Caterpillar almost came to Virginia back in 2011, all right? But when you look at this graph, you're starting to see a trend of the timeline getting shorter and shorter and shorter. That's an average of five months from the time a Robert gets called or contacted until a decision is made. Almost $5 billion investment, 10 projects, average of five months, over 14,000 jobs created, and in 2014, Boeing, just outside of Charleston, South Carolina, not too different of a region than what you have here, expanded an additional $1.1 billion and additional 2,000 jobs. What was amazing about the Toyota project was that was decided in five months or less. They hired their site selection consultant, they negotiated a $1.7 billion incentive package, 4,000 jobs in five months. So, the big projects are fun to talk about, they're sexy, but the reality is, this happens for small projects too, okay? Acme smoked fish, Project Casper at the time, and it's not associated with the Wile E. Coyote companies. But that was a two-and-a-half-month timeline for decision. Franklin and Southampton County were in the mix for that. It very easily could have come to Portsmouth, or Norfolk, or Suffolk. I know they looked at those areas. But that was 20-acre site, two-and-a-half-month timeline, $27 million, and 104 jobs. And I think everybody would be happy with that. They ended up going to Pender County, North Carolina, literally just outside of Wilmington, North Carolina, because they had the infrastructure to accommodate them. Easily, this project could have been in Portsmouth, Virginia. So, not only are they making their decisions quickly, once they make a decision to go, they are building their facilities as quick as they can. Amazon's Vitamin Shop, 312,000-square-foot worldwide distribution center, literally was moving the equipment in the week before the announcement. Within two hours of the governor's announcement, they were cranking up the machines and going to work on that pad-ready site. Three weeks, we were pad-grade it out for over 300,000 square foot. Two-and-a-half months, they had tilt-up construction walls up, and eight months later, they were substantially complete, moving product in. So, again, once they make that announcement, they're ready to go, and they need to establish that competitive advantage worldwide. So, really, who are your target audiences here that you need to be cognizant of? You have your prospects, that's the company themselves, your site selection consultants, and your commercial real estate agents. Those two are kind of becoming one and same, and you have preferred developers. The prospects, they're really looking for the best business decision. They want a community that fits, they want to be able to acquire the workforce, they're looking for that urban feel, or whatever feel makes it fit with their company culture. So, site selection consultants and real estate, commercial real estate brokers. Site elimination process, 80% to 90% of that search is done. You have to have a very robust website with a lot of information. There's a lot of data they can acquire today without even picking up the phone or you just flying it to them, because they're going to back-check as much as they can. We get hired by site selection consultants to help look at infrastructure and sites and evaluate what has been given to them to identify their risks from a cost and scheduling perspective. Need to have ready-go sites, utilities and infrastructure in place, and thorough site due diligence, and then incentives and commissions matter to those guys. So, the preferred developers, that's like an interchange, that's like a Seafreight Development or Johnson Development. They'll sign on dotted lines and say, "I will deliver your product by September 1, or else I'll pay $10,000 a day, liquidated damages." So, what are they looking for? They're looking for elimination of their risk. Anything can enter schedule risk in a time. Amazon had us go look at the local stone quarries and figure out how much stone dust they have, because we figured if we had to undercut the soil during time-of-year construction, that they needed that stone. $3 million for one, $3.5 million for another. They put that into their formula, and they said, "Yes, we can take that risk." And lo and behold, they ended up using about all the stone dust from those two quarries just to meet their schedule. They need fast-track permitting and process, okay? They don't want to wait 30 days. They won't have turnaround on their comments, on their engineering plans, within three-to-five business days, basically a week or less, and then they'll turn their plans around back to you as quickly as possible. But again, certainty of schedule. And then, that control of development costs, and then how quickly can I start construction? So, when it comes to sites, what is being sold versus what you're buying? A lot of times, we show up and everybody's got a nice-looking Mercedes, polished off on the showroom floor, but you go open the hood, and you're missing, and this is typical for greenfield sites and redevelopment sites. You haven't done your cultural resources work, you haven't cleaned up the site, you haven't cleared your environmental. What's that engine or transmission that's missing, okay? And that's part of what we get brought in to do, because that's the risk element. So, site development is a logical process. Site development, redevelopment, very logical timelines to go with it. So, when we developed this tearing system, we looked at, what are the elements you need to keep in mind as you're moving a site forward? And we basically go in and we use this to rank sites for our clients, and again, Virginia codified this in the Business Ready Sites Program. Why does this matter? I call it gambler's odds. What gives you the best odds of success? You need to be able to kind of transact your timelines for development with the developer's ability to get a building out of the ground, and that falls into a tier four or five category. Most local governments want to know, what is my time and what is my cost associated with it? So, we've put the cost over there into a category, what is your financial investment? You can get to a tier three where you've quantified your spend. You've done preliminary engineering reports, it's going to cost me X dollars to redevelop a site, it's going to cost me X dollars to upgrade my water and sewer infrastructure, it's going to cost me X dollars to upgrade my roads, and you've spent a little bit of money for that on a per-acre basis, but you've increased the value of that property significantly, almost 10 to 20 times what that dollar-per-acre investment is. Once you get to a tier four, I'm starting to invest in my infrastructure upgrades, and that's what the market wants to see as a tier four site. So, when you look at it, there are really two basic elements. You're in a process of redevelopment, tiers zero through three, you're getting in the game, and then you're in a product fulfillment. Once you have the product that's ready to go, you have a car on the car lot that is a nice-looking car, you can go to sale. You can try to sell that product as quick as possible. As I mentioned before, and these are the basic elements of it, because you have a lot of redevelopment opportunities, you kind of fall in those tier three and tier four categories, and a lot of your time and effort needs to be spent on making sure you've cleared those sites, cleaned them up, gotten all the environmental elements taken care of. So, what drives some of these prospect location decisions, okay? It's access to markets, workforce, logistics, transportation costs, total cost of ownership, what is that power cost associated with it? Dominion's Data Center Site Certification Program. They want to know, what is my total spend over 20 years? It matters. Some of you might have seen this. This is a projected America's 2050 map of where the markets are going to be growing. This is the Charlotte to Atlanta, northeastern United States, and lo and behold, where is Virginia and where are subsea cables coming in? Right here in Virginia Beach. So, you're in a prime spot for logistics distribution and other technological development. So, there are really three major elements that drive an economic development deal. First is the building or facility cost. They can tell you that much, how much that costs from the ground up, almost a dollar. Second is land cost. They want price certainty, because that's a one-time spend in their business model. And then, the soft, squishy stuff in the middle is site and infrastructure development or redevelopment cost. That's how much is it? Has the greatest variability, who pays? That's pretty much where every incentive package is negotiated around, is the site and infrastructure development cost or redevelopment cost. So, not all sites are created equal. You have land acquisition costs, you have all-site improvements, and you have one-site improvements. Those are the basic elements that you need to deal with moving forward. And when you run these out, sorry about that little mess up right there, when you run these out, a $50,000 acre piece property and a $100,000 acre piece property, and you run all those different elements, they can come up being about the same cost of development. At that point in time, for a prospect, it's a decision, okay, which site do you prefer? And they can go make their choice, but just because a piece of property is listed for 40,000 acre, and one's listed for 100,000 acre, doesn't mean they're equal pieces of property. So, the other thing we'll do is, we've got to make connection between your site physical limitations and capacities to your tax revenue. So, we can go in and we can do test fits on sites that identify what your three-dimensional elements are, what I call a smart test fit. Maxwell Smart there, get smart on your site. And you can determine, if I've got a dollar per square foot for real estate investment, and I can get a million square footer on there, what is my potential real estate investment that's coming back to me? When you look at these different industries which you deal with, logistics distribution is a smaller per-square-foot investment, up to IT data centers, which has a significantly higher per-square-foot investment. And as we've done, the Dominion Data Center Site Certification Program, you can also look at all the different infrastructure demands and whatnot, and look at that through that lens. But you obviously want to try to capture as high a square foot per dollar investment as possible, within reason, but realize that you have physical and infrastructure limitations to go with that. When it comes to development, redevelopment, something you have to keep in mind is sometimes time is greater than money, okay? So, those minimal investments up front to get a piece of property ready to go, when a legitimate prospect comes along, that gives you a significant competitive advantage, because time is greater than money in a lot of their eyes. This is a poll we did for the regional groups, where we looked at what percentage of their ass were coming in for sites and buildings in place, and 64% here in Hereta came in for those in 2016. So, I took a little bit of a deeper look at what's going on in Newport News. You know, this was, I guess, through 2018 year-to-date, this was actually March of 2018, I believe, when we presented originally. So, you had 400 new jobs and $18.3 million investment. That's in the VDP database, okay? That's not, might not be the actual numbers, that's what's been reported in VDP. I know you guys were on a little bit of an upswing. I think you're, you had what, 40, over 40 million last year, I believe? So, hopefully, those numbers will continue to climb over time, and I think you'll see that coming through for you. We also looked at the available industrial buildings, trying to answer those questions. And as I mentioned, the interchange project is 200,000 square foot available, and you've got some nice products on the market, but you could also probably afford to put some more on the market. So, the other thing we looked at was 10-acre sites within the Hampton Roads area. You only had one. Portsmouth, of the 17 that were listed, Portsmouth only had one, or roughly 6%, and that was the BASF site. I think that's one of your better redevelopment opportunities. I believe you have an adjacent property owner that might be willing to sell too, or you might want to consider that, maybe, maybe not. Brownfield redevelopment, one of the things you always have to keep in mind is that every business goes through a 20- or 30-year cycle, business cycle. So, when an existing business is getting that age, and you're not seeing much movement out of them, there are one or two things that will happen. They're either going to go down in the business, or reinvest, or they're potentially going to move. So, you need to start paying attention to them, we're kind of in that aspect of their business cycle. The great thing about Brownfields is, there are significant grant opportunities available for them, and they show well. The bones and the infrastructure are excellent. Every Brownfield site, we seem to get cleaned up, usually lasting where from six to 12 months on the market, because they're that much in demand. twelve months on the market, because they're that much in demand. So, when I look at Portsmouth and your assets, y'all've got a lot going for you. You really do. I think y'all've got all the ingredients to make a great recipe. I think y'all've got some chefs in the kitchen that are bringing it all together right now. And I see the huge upside potential for you all. You've got a great partner in the port of Virginia. You've got transportation access. Again, no tunnels going out. You've got a majestic waterfront, access to worldwide markets. We were hired by Midland Broadband on behalf of Microsoft to do the cable site search. My colleague Larry Berry helped me with that. Within forty-five days, we got down to twelve potential locations for a cable landing station for Microsoft. They were in competition with Google, so every time a permit would pop up, they would ask us, "Look it up and say, 'Hey, is that Google or not?'" But that literally is transforming the market for you. And you have a high-speed cable running right through your community, of which you can designate a technology zone potentially for. You can also certify it for a data center site, possibly. So, you've got all the different elements in place. I just see the upside potential being pretty significant. Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy right now is actually updating their offshore report. That is a market that is maturing off the East Coast, and it's maturing pretty quick. And I think that's where you're going to see some potential opportunities, and maybe where your BASF site could be a good opportunity to move forward with that. And the Portsmouth Marine Terminal will play a game in that, I'm sure, as well, too. So, communities that are successful in economic development. As I mentioned, you're going to hear three consistent themes: fast-track process, collaboration, and speed to market. They're very collaborative, proactive, and intentional about economic development, okay? They also recognize that economic development is a long-term game. It is not an election-cycle buzzword, all right? I'll go in the closed session a lot, and I'll be like, "You can be making a decision today, spend tens of millions of dollars or millions of dollars redeveloping a site, and chances are, you're not going to have a prospect announcement before your next election. Do you want to take that step or not?" And they'll say, "We want to do both. We want to do the long term, and we also want to do the short term." They have a comprehensive economic development strategy, and they execute on it. Ninety percent of business success comes from execution, okay? Everybody, thirty-two teams plan to win the Super Bowl each year, but only one does, and that's a team that usually executes, has a little luck involved, but executes in a very aggressive manner to win that Super Bowl. As I kept saying about the Toyota project when North Carolina was pursuing it, I'm sure the Atlanta Falcons would love to go back and relive that third quarter against the New England Patriots, okay? You never want to go back and regret having to relive that third quarter in any project. They understand their assets and their sites. They understand your costs and revenue drivers. You need to understand that point where you go from a good deal to a bad deal, because again, you're spending public money, okay? You need to be able to publicly defend that decision, and if it flips over to that point from a good deal to a bad deal, you need to be aware of that, and you need to be able to decide whether it's worth it or not. You've got to remove those political hurdles and risks, have fast-track permitting in place, and then plain and simple, those localities get it. I think you all get it. I'm seeing a lot of activity here now, and I think that's a great thing. So, the economic development credo is work every deal until the very end, because you don't know what you're going to learn about your side of community that will help you land your next prospect. We were involved in helping Virginia trying to land Apple, okay? North Carolina was able to make a legislative change over the tax interpretation of the HVAC equipment. Tim Kaine was lame duck governor. We'd already gone out of session. Virginia could not make that. The tax code interpretation was not good. Well, Apple went to North Carolina. Less than a year later, Microsoft discovered a sinkhole issue in Montgomery County outside of Blacksburg, was getting ready to leave the state. They said, "Why don't you go take a look at the site in Mecklenburg, Virginia?" And about sixty days later, they made an announcement in Mecklenburg, Virginia, and that's driven the subsea cable project, that is their cloud data center. And they have made literally well over a billion dollars' worth of investment in that community. So, at the end of the day, life is what happens when preparation meets opportunities. Being a football fan, the will to win is not so nearly as important as the will to prepare to win. And that's what we tell our clients, you've got to have the will to prepare to win, because when you get in the game, you're not going to have time to go back and learn how to block and tackle. So, with that being said, thank you for your time. I think I left us about five minutes, I hope.
All right. Well, let's just open it up for questions from anybody. You had mentioned that we're in a position to perhaps get certified for data. Is that a data center?
Yeah, so, we are certifying sites for Dominion, as far as looking at the infrastructure and look at all the key components of what data centers look for. So, I would certainly, if you guys have a site that appears will pre-screen, we can pre-screen it for Dominion, but that's certainly something you can consider doing, is certifying a site along its technology cores, especially with the cable landing going by. We just certified Virginia Beach's corporate landing park as a data center park. We did that within the past twelve months, shortly after we made that announcement.
What does that consist of?
Sure, we go through, make sure you've got all the appropriate due diligence on the site. You need to be able to coincide that timeline with the developer getting out of the ground. And then Dominion has to look at the power infrastructure, make sure they can accommodate a data center, an enterprise-type data center as well, too. And then we have to look at your water and sewer infrastructure to make sure that that's of adequate capacity. Based upon what I know about the city of Portsmouth, I can say with a high level of confidence, if you pick an appropriate site running by the cable, I would think that you would be able to get certified. But if there are certain elements that are lacking, like you don't have a geotechnical report done, or wetlands delineation, we ask you to do that before we certify it on behalf of Dominion.
Great. Did you have your hand up?
No. Sorry.
I was going to look, looking for the slide, but early in your presentation, you used the term "cultural something."
Cultural resources.
What is a cultural resource?
If the laws that were in place today were in place sixty years ago, I doubt Hampton Roads would look like what it is. But basically, the state agency looks at any archaeological, cultural resource element, historical property or element to a site development that might need to be protected. And what usually triggers it is a Section 106 process. If you want to make a wetlands impact, that triggers that process. The Corps of Engineers will issue the wetlands permit. The State Department of Historic Resources will clear the Section 106 process, okay? Basically, you need to understand, do you have a threatening and dangerous species issue on the site? Do you have a archaeological resource issue on the site? And there are processes and procedures to go about clearing those, if you do have them. Very rarely is there something that you can't clear, but the other side of it, too, is it adds to the timeline for a developer. So, if you don't clear it upfront, it can present a six- to twelve-month hurdle for a developer, just from the time it takes for an archaeologist to get out there and do his work, or come to an agreement with the state as to how to mitigate that resource.
Well, you mentioned that a couple of years ago, or maybe a year ago, that we were postured to be one of the cities that could have very well took on that business. I mean, and I'm looking at a screen here that states the number of acres. So, was it that they were looking for more acres, or what was it that we didn't have?
Sure. And I don't know specifically what you didn't have, because I didn't do an analysis here, per se. Where Pender County, Wilmington, North Carolina won it was they were building a brand-new treatment system, okay? And food and beverage is a nice, sexy industry to talk about, but the reality is they do have a robust waste stream, because they're usually heavy in our particulates and heavy in biological oxygen demand. So, that's why you have pretreatment programs in place, okay? So, they were building, literally building a brand-new wastewater treatment plant outside of Wilmington, North Carolina, of which they can modify their process during the construction process to make it easier for that company to send them their wastewater stream, because it was smoked salmon. So, they were using salts in their, in their water, their brine in the water, and then there was heavy particulates just from the salmon parts that remained in the wastewater that were going out of the plant. So, that was a treatment plant issue, but all the other physical characteristics, if you could have accommodated, if Hampton Roads Sanitation District could have accommodated them, it very easily could have come to Portsmouth, Virginia.
Planning Commission members, any questions?
Either I did a, either I did a good job and answered a lot of questions, or I confound a few people, so.
On Slide nine, and I don't expect you to go back, you're talking about VEDP's perspective. Sixty-plus percent of the inquiries are for existing buildings. New or rehabbed buildings?
Both, really, when it gets right down to it. And there's a couple of drivers behind that. What usually you see is when a company's looking to expand, they'll hand that off to a first-time executive who is trying to get the expansion in place as quickly as possible. And so, they just don't understand the site development process sometimes. So, that's, that's one of the reasons why. The other reason why is because they, they need to be up and running as quickly as possible, and they view a greenfield or a brownfield redevelopment as being a little bit too costly from a time perspective. So, those are a couple of drivers behind it. From the example I showed you for the vitamin shop, I can show you within sixty days, thirty to sixty days, how you can do a retrofit of an existing building, or you can bring a brand-new building out of the ground, and it's about a thirty to sixty-day delta. So, you almost have to have a perfect building to fit your needs. And then there's a cost element of it that goes into it, too. So, by the time they usually do that analysis, chances are, they might be sixty or seventy percent of the time, building a brand-new building out of the ground, because construction methodology has gotten to the point that they can fast-track that through the development process.
You indicated that a lot of the screening work is done at a desktop.
Yes, sir.
That could be in California, or Michigan, or Wisconsin.
Absolutely.
Okay. And that, that the first swipe is at the regional level. What are the limiting factors for our region? What knocks us out?
Well, that's a good, that's a good question. Had a professor say, "It's a great question if I immediately knew the answer." It's a good question if I think about it for a second. No, I, I think your transportation issues are the biggest issue down here, and that's why I give you a competitive advantage with no tunnels to have to get out of here, okay?
Going west and south.
Yeah, going west and south, absolutely. The port's a big competitive advantage. We were down touring the Wilmington Port a couple of weeks ago. They're going to be, the Virginia Port at build-out will be ten times larger than the Wilmington Port, okay? So, you're going to have a certain amount of port traffic coming through here regardless. So, that is a competitive advantage regionally. Between your competitors, though, everybody's lacking sites at this point in time, ready-to-go sites. Every locality is trying to deal with that issue. I say this in all sincerity, the smart money has bought up the good property, okay? So, a lot of the property out there that you're going to buy and develop has got some type of hair on it, and it's going to take some type of a, a process to get that ready to develop. As I say, we're engineers, we put a man on the moon. You give us enough time and money, we can do anything. In this business, it matters how much time and how much money. Because again, they've got a competitive advantage to get their product on the ground. And I'll give you an example. Aldi and Lidl are in a competition to build stores across the United States right now, okay? And we had a cultural resource issue for a potential Aldi distribution center just outside of Petersburg. We had to get the State Secretary of Commerce and Trade involved, as well as Secretary of Natural Resources, because they said, "If I don't have my permit by X date, I have got to retool three existing plants and not build this plant, and I'm pulling out of Virginia altogether." And the state stepped up and said, "Okay, we're going to do what it takes to get this permit for you," and they did. So, that's the type of market dynamics that you're dealing with. When I say the seventy to eighty percent of it is not in your control, their decision-making criteria of why they might want to choose you versus Norfolk, or you versus Suffolk, or Suffolk versus Norfolk, they're going, there's going to be some element there you might not be able to control when they come to do the site visit. I just, I, I think you're in a potential to be as successful, or more so successful, because you are closer to the transportation infrastructure to get out of here versus to get in here. And I think it's a huge competitive advantage that you need to take advantage of.
And the term of art is "site-ready," which means that there's no legislation needed in order to pull the trigger. Is that correct?
For, for the Business Ready Sites Program?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they set the program up, one, for people to assess sites. What we recognized, when we lost Caterpillar in 2011, and they were looking at Southampton County, Virginia, and they needed a 200-acre pad-ready site, they made a decision to leave Japan in early November, hired a site selection consultant the week of Thanksgiving. He literally was visiting sites the first week in December, said, "We're going to make an announcement, people, we're going to break ground in March." And we had Southampton County Turner Site was in there. Enviva ended up taking that site down. So, we had a site visit on Monday, Enviva took the site down Wednesday, Thursday. I got the phone call on Friday, we're taking the site off the table, bird in the hands, better than two in the bush. And I called the state up, and they were sick. And they said, "Joe, can you find me one other site in Virginia that will work?" We went through the inventory of sites that we knew, and I said, "Yeah, I've got one site, that's the Amazon facility in Chesapeake County, and you're going to have to tell the governor to call off that deal, because we're about to get the final permit to make the announcement." So, there was kind of that aha moment of, there's a lack of good product, ready-to-go product in the state. And then that became a big issue, and then that became the driver behind the Business Ready Sites Program, setting up a committee to study what's going on. And that applies from small sites to large sites, okay? And the fact that we can't meet market demand, there's not a lot of spec space going in the ground here in Hampton Roads, for whatever reason, for logistics distribution. Starting to see more of it come in, but people are investing like crazy in Orlando, Atlanta, Nashville, Tennessee, but they just aren't putting spec space down on the ground here. And what we've discovered in the marketplace is a lot of the sites aren't ready to go. It's taken, they've got a lot of hair on them, and it's taken some time to get those issues cleared, such that they can actually put spec space on the ground or move in a timely fashion. So, that, that is the biggest issue. So, once you get to a tier four level, the state is proactively marketing that site for you. They'll put it on their website. If you're going to be a tier three or less, they're not going to, they're not going to feature your property on the state website.
Other questions? Dr. Bass?
Mr. Hines, do you think that the state is positioned for serious consideration for the Amazon headquarters?
Yes, I do.
That's all you need to say, you don't have to say anything else. I know it's kind of...
Yeah, three of your top twenty sites are around Washington, DC. One in DC, one in Maryland, one in northern Virginia.
Yeah.
Initial feedback I've gotten is that none of the three want it in their backyard, but they want it in somebody else's backyard, because they don't have to pay for the infrastructure cost. The other dark horse candidacy I've always given is Research Triangle Park. Amazon, since I'm a Duke Business School graduate, I served on one of their boards, and they now, Amazon now hires more Duke Business School graduates than any other employer. Deloitte did for the longest time running, for about ten years. Now, Amazon hires more Duke MBAs than anybody else. And then they also have on the books to hire 50,000 programmers in 2018. A lot of people don't realize Jeff Bezos is...
Fifty thousand, yes.
Fifty thousand, yes. Jeff Bezos is a Princeton grad. I think he was maybe Computer Science, Electrical Engineering graduate. He worked on Wall Street for a while, and then he started up Amazon. But he always had technology and computer programming as his base understanding, and that's why he pushes the envelope, or that's my speculation, is why he pushes the envelope on that. Amazon Web Services, he stumbled across Amazon Web Services. He built his infrastructure for November 1 through Christmas season, his IT infrastructure. Ten months out of the year, he had idle servers. And they're like, "Well, let's check out this cloud web services deal." And now that generates probably over half of his revenue, and it's his biggest, most profitable business within Amazon. So, using technology as an accelerator, it's, it's a huge, huge advantage that you have to take advantage of. And again, you've got connectivity to worldwide markets with your cable coming through the middle of your backyard, and I'll do everything I could to take advantage of that.
The one thing that's very interesting, of all the places in the United States, we've got three places close to us that's under consideration, as you said, northern Virginia. So, as, as, as Mr. Moore and I, and others in economic, wherever it comes, if it comes to Virginia, it's going to help us all in some way. So, we may be here, but there's still opportunity.
Yeah, and it will for, it will for, if it comes Raleigh-Durham area as well, too. So, you know, the, the, I think Jeff, this is Joe Hines speculation, I think Jeff Bezos knew where his top five places were before he made the announcement. What he got was 238 competitive proposals in probably the most populous places in the United States, of which markets, of which he wants to serve as a company. So, he got a significant amount of research and inside knowledge on 237 other localities that he's not going to choose, of which he can go in and say, "All right, I'll give you a half million or a million-square-foot fulfillment center as a consolation prize, just because I want to serve your market." I want to serve your market. I don't think he might even be upset about that.
Thank you.
Pretty shrewd.
Yeah, it's smart.
Anything else?
Thank you very much, sir.
Sure. Mr. Moore has my contact information. If anybody has any questions or any follow-up items that y'all want us to address or bring back to you, we'd be more than glad to. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, sir. Mayor, members of council, we will have Mr. Swett with the resiliency enforcement presentation.
Dr. Patton, this same presentation was given to the EDA?
Yes.
And who else?
And PPIC.
Okay.
PPIC.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Brian Swett, I'm in the Planning Department. I'm here tonight to talk to you about what Portsmouth is doing to make itself a more resilient city. Before we get into the nuts and bolts of this, I want to remind everyone what resiliency is. It's, to me, it's a thought process for how to address and try to solve problems. This graphic will give it a little bit more detail, but essentially involves identifying a problem, gathering data to understand the problem, coming up with a plan to address the problem, implementing or executing that plan, measuring how well you succeeded in trying to solve that problem, and then learning from your mistakes and going back and fixing things. So it becomes an iterative process that feeds back on itself. It's not just going out and building something or fixing something, there's a lot more to it than that. So with that being said, we have kind of broken down what we're doing in the city into four categories for how we are addressing resiliency. That'd be planning and data gathering, updating the city's comprehensive plan, implementation efforts, and future work. In the data gathering mode, the city worked with the Virginia Modeling Analysis and Simulation Center to do a telephone survey of about 2,000 households. And we did this originally because we wanted to get a better understanding of, do people in Portsmouth believe that climate change and sea level rise are real? So I guess that was about 2,000 phone calls, we had about 45 questions, we came up with this great report that gave us tons of information, a lot of which we were able to map. Like you see here, this is a map of where a street flooding frequency is the worst, red being the worst. When we went back and we looked at the findings, we were able to come up with some very, some very broad categorizations of responses. One was that recurrent flooding and not sea level rise is actually a bigger problem for Portsmouth. We tend to hear about sea level rise because Norfolk and Virginia Beach dominate the news, but we're a little bit higher, and we have a little bit steeper slopes along our waterways, so we're actually a little bit better protected. What we have struggled more with is heavy rains from storms and from wind events pushing stormwater back into the system. That's an immediate problem, and it's a bigger future problem. We found that everyone in Portsmouth is being hurt by flooding, but it's really low-income people who are being hurt the worst. We found that if you make under $25,000, you are much more likely to either not be able to get into or out of your neighborhood, or that you've experienced street flooding in your neighborhood at some point during the past year. And then clearly, when you have a lack of resources, they are also at least able to be able to try to protect their property, to, you know, protect themselves from flooding in the future. And finally, and I think significantly for us as we updated the comp plan, we found that people in Portsmouth do believe in climate change and sea level rise. Over 70% of people believe not just in sea level rise, but significant sea level rise in the future. And we define significant as a foot and a half by 2050. So this was encouraging news, because that means that when we have to go out and start doing some things, people will understand why we're doing them, and will tend to be more supportive. We don't actually have to convince people that this is a problem. The update to the city's comprehensive plan, the Build One Portsmouth effort, is all about resiliency. When Bob and I sat down for their very first meeting to talk about updating the comprehensive plan, and we talked about what is it that we want our ideal plan to look like, we said that resiliency has to be the main focus. So not only is it one of the four visions that we addressed with strategies and tactics in the plan, we try to incorporate the thought process of resiliency that I described earlier everywhere that we can, because in order for us to be growing and thriving and equitable, we have to be resilient. In the comprehensive plan, we do specifically acknowledge that climate change and sea level rise are happening, and that we need to address them. This is clearly just, you know, general best practice for government, but it's also a state requirement now. So we are making sure to get that put into the plan. And then we have our updated list of strategies and tactics that you all have reviewed that are designed, again, to make the city more resilient. We have worked with the Virginia Institute of Marine Science to build some models of flooding in the city. What these will do is take storms that have already happened, so for example Hurricane Isabel, and say, well, what would this look like in the future, given various levels of sea level rise and storm surge? And so the FEMAS was able to create these models and these maps that would say, okay, in 2040, if we had about half a foot of sea level rise, then the blue areas would be the places that are flooded, the streets. The red areas are buildings that we would lose. And so we have a number of different storms, and a number of different scenarios. This is all available on the website if you would like to review it. But this, I cropped this to show, you know, just the downtown, but this goes for the entire city. Now that we have the model built, that's the hard part. It's actually very easy for them to go back and run different scenarios, so this is something that we can keep going back to over time as we need to. Okay, so getting away from the planning and data gathering, but into the actual implementation things that we're doing actively right now on the ground. We have the, our updated flood plain management plan, we have new FEMA flood maps, we have various mitigation strategies, for example, you know, putting cyanide out to let people know that, hey, this is how deep floodwaters are right now. We're replacing the downtown seawall, we are installing and replacing tide gates throughout the city, and that has, we know it's had a, it's been really helpful in protecting us from flooding. At places where we have done that, we're seeing significantly less flooding in the streets. And also the city's stormwater management program. Another implementation effort that we have is the, our involvement in the community rating system. The, this is run almost entirely by Meg Pittenger, who you'll hear from later, who has done an absolutely tremendous job, deserves a great deal of credit for the hard work that she's put in getting this city classified as a CRS Class VII, which gives people with flood insurance a 15% discount on their flood insurance premiums. This is something, the work that Meg has done is recognized throughout Virginia. Portsmouth is one of the most successful cities in Virginia in the CRS program. We are working with the Army Corps of Engineers and Hampton Roads Planning District Commission to try to get more data on first-floor elevations. First-floor elevations are what FEMA uses to determine whether or not you need flood insurance if your house is above, if your first-floor elevation is above there, and you don't need flood insurance even if you're in a flood zone. But we know that from our survey data, that a lot of people who are in a flood zone don't actually have flood insurance. And so that's an obvious cause for concern. We would like to be able to get this data, because it'll help the city better assess its risk to flooding. It would also be helpful for us to be able to push some of that information along to consumers who may not have the ability to go out and get that kind of survey information on their own. And then future work, we are gonna be embarking, hopefully soon, on a joint land use study. We'll be in collaborations with the City of Chesapeake and the Navy, in looking at facilities on Crane Island, the Naval Hospital, the shipyard, and St. Julian's Creek Annex. The major focus of this is gonna be the resiliency of those entities and how that they work with the cities, especially with things like flooding, you know, getting to and from the shipyard or the hospital can be difficult when we have storms. And then how are they gonna address climate change and sea level rise? And then how, when they do that, how will that affect us? We are about to enter an agreement with a company in Norfolk called Green Stream Technologies. They're going to install 13 ultrasound flood sensors throughout the city. This is one that's existing in the City of Norfolk right now. What these will do is, when it starts to rain, they'll turn themselves on, and they'll use ultrasounds to measure the depth of flooding in a given location. So we've identified locations that we know are gonna flood. So for example, like High in Washington would be a place that we're gonna put one of these sensors in. The information is then updated in almost real time, every six minutes, and then sent to the cloud where it is open to anyone. So emergency management can use it to see if they need to close a road, researchers can use it to get more information that they can use for building models and scenarios, citizens can use it to see if their street is flooded, you know, maybe when they commute home. We're hoping that in the future, where this goes, is that this, the cloud information will be adapted into something like Google Maps or Waze, where people could actually go on their phone and say, okay, I can't go here right now, it'll show up just like it's traffic. Or even better, if people were getting alerts, push them to say, you know, this street is flooded, don't go here. We are about to start work with an on-call consultant, Arcadis, who can help us with any measure of resiliency efforts. I think one of the most impressive things that came through in their presentation, though, was their success in identifying alternative sources of funding, because we know that trying to make the city more resilient is gonna be an expensive proposition, so we need to do everything that we can to find additional resources to help us do that. And Arcadis has had a tremendous amount of success in doing that for other cities. And finally, we have some future projects through the Engineering Department. Court and Green Streets will be installing green infrastructure, we will have a new pump station in Old Town, and the downtown stormwater park out here. These are just a couple of things that we're doing on the ground. With that, we have to answer any questions.
Questions? From anybody?
Brian, could you tell me something about the Court and Green Streets Infrastructure Pilot Project?
I will defer to James Wright, the city's engineer, if you don't mind.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, and Planning Commission. It's actually just Court Street, from Court Street, from London, down, down to the water. Probably about 10 years or so ago, when we did the downtown master utility plan, we were looking at actually that street. There were concerns about the width of the street, not necessarily needing to be that wide. When they come in to do that project, the thought was, okay, you could redesign that street, you could have some nice green infrastructure on that street, you could do some traffic calming. And that was the initial concept. We went out and we got a Green Streets grant to actually do the concept. We've done some surveys with Old Town. We've actually just received notification that we're in contention for an additional grant funding through that same program. So our goal is to continue forward, and to continue to try to get funding to move forward with that project. So we're in the concept stage, we're probably within the next 60 days or so, gonna go to Old Town with the results of the survey and the concept design, so we can get some additional information to continue to move forward with that project.
Thank you, sir.
Bill? How about Washington Street? James, any thing in the plans to alleviate flooding? That's one of the streets that...
The actual, the stormwater pump station will pick up the flooding from that part of Washington Street. So that is where, we finished preliminary engineering port, puts us about 30% design. We had a meeting with consultants, so we're ready to kick off the main part of design to get into that final design stage. So we're looking to be complete with design somewhere towards the end of the year, first part of next year. Part of that would be determining whether we construct the project in one phase or two phases.
So we're three years out?
That depends on how many phases we construct a project. And we construct a project in one phase, we're probably about 18 months out. If we construct it in two phases, we're three years out.
All right. Anybody else?
I guess, I don't know if it's you or Brian, but the planning, data gathering, the studies where the floods were shown, the red and the blue area, I mean, so we took Isabel, and we know what it'll look like if we're here now. I mean, is it something that we can do to build up the land, or change it, or get away from it, or improve it? Because I know there was a study, it was in the recent media, that showed that Portsmouth was one of the areas that was most affected by...
Right. And there's different ways of attacking the problem in some places. There may be, you know, hard projects that the Engineering Department can design and build, like say, the Old Town Pump Station to help alleviate it. In some places, it might be useful to even think about retreating. That's something that no one ever wants to talk about for obvious reasons, but, you know, when we have to start getting into the kind of cost-benefit analyses of different options in places, that, you know, that's when the rubber really meets the road. So, you know, we're hoping that through, especially through the comp planning process, because we know that this is something that's, you can't do it in a year or two, you know, we're looking at decades worth of work. So we start spreading this out, we start planning for it, and you hope, as you take little chunks here and there along the way, instead of trying to do everything all at once at the end, that that makes it more manageable.
All right. Dr. Patton?
Mayor, and Members of Council, I'd like to call to your attention that it was probably about four or five months ago, you approved the grant that now is being put in place for the installation of these sensors. And we'll be coming forward with you, because looking across all 17 departments in the City of Portsmouth, millions of dollars comes in for grants and programs and projects, from state grants that affect across several departments. But with our GrantsRite and our GrantsTeam, significant dollars are coming in. And as Mr. Swett said, we're up for additional consideration. This will bring in 13. But imagine if we could get these throughout all of the city, where we know that there is flooding. What difference it can make in the future to prepare people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Next, Mayor, Members of Council, Mrs. Meg Pittenger will come forward with the flood regulations in historic districts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Dr. Patton, Members of Council, Members of the Planning Commission. As you know, I'm Meg Pittenger. I'm, thank you. I'm with the Unplanning Department, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the impact of flood regulations in historic districts. As you know, we adopted new maps in 2015, and we want to provide some assistance to the Historic Preservation Commission and the Downtown Design Committee on how these things might impact those areas. Because in other areas of the cities, they're not designed. We don't care, I always tell people, I don't care what it looks like, it just has to function. But in the design areas, we want it to look a certain way. So we're gonna discuss the relationship of the flood zones to those zones, to those areas that are design districts, and then discuss some potential impacts. This is what you'll see when you look at a flood map. I always tell people, think of the areas in blue as water, those are the regulated flood zones. The yellow area is the next, I'm gonna say safer in quotation marks, zone. So I tell people, think caution. And then the areas that are unshaded are the minimal-risk zones. The red areas are the areas where you have wave action, and those are sort of the danger areas, think of like, you know, down at the oceanfront. But we also have some wave areas, particularly on the north-facing shore. So when you're looking at a flood map, the blue areas are the ones you want to look at. And certainly, we know that it can and does flood in areas that are not in the map flood zones. You know, the church and village apartments out there flood all the time, not a map zone. So just because you're outside of the line, the water doesn't know where the line is. You know, it's an arbitrary line.
That's true.
So the flood regulations apply when a structure touches the flood zone. If you have flood zone in the backyard and the front yard, but the structure's not in it, flood regulations don't apply to that. When the structure touches it, that's what we're talking about. And for residential structures, we want them to be elevated. We don't want people down at, you know, at a dangerous level and get impacted by the water. And property owners can choose to mitigate beyond what is required in the regulations. They may want to do it regardless of whether it's required, and they may want to go to a higher level, and we certainly encourage people to do that. So why do you mitigate, right? So you want to make sure that you can withstand and get back to business as soon as possible, whether you're a business, whether you're, you know, a resident. It's much better just to go back to your normal life, rather than mucking out the basement again and again and again. That's why you want to mitigate. So you want to get back to that, because that helps, you know, if a business is out of commission because it's flooded, then you're not, they're not generating any revenue, their employees are not working, that's a bad thing. Or if you're at home and you're having to deal with your house, you're not going to work, you're maybe not going to school. So you want to mitigate so that you can get back to life sooner. That's, you know, what, you know, Brian talked all about, that resilience, and that's what we're talking about here.
Can you go back to four?
Absolutely. Oh, I'm sorry. So this is an example of what the flood map, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is an example of what the flood zone looks like in the downtown area. Certainly, it's, you know, the entire city has maps, and each historic district is gonna have a different map. In this particular one, the gray buildings, these are the highlighted buildings here, are the ones in the historic district that actually touch the flood zone. And that's where the flood regulations are going to apply, is where the building itself, any part of it, we call it the one-step-one-brick rule. If any part of the building touches the flood zone, then the flood regulations are gonna apply. Again, it's not all of downtown, but it's certainly a significant part of it. And again, each of the historic districts would have, you know, their own map.
It's a lot of it.
It's a lot. It is a lot. So there are lots of strategies you can use. I always like to use this slide just as sort of, you know, an icebreaker. This, I found this slide when I was researching, this apparently is the most utilized flood mitigation strategy in the state of Pennsylvania. We're not saying that this is what we're proposing, but it's a way to do it. You tear the structure down, and you... You tear the structure down and you build a new structure to the current code, and it's elevated, it's out of the way. Again, in, in a lot of historic districts, you're probably not going to do this, but it is a method. So this is a structure in Old Town that was mitigated several years ago. And you can see what it looks like. Beforehand, it was really low, flooded all the time. So they, so they came in, elevated it up on cribs, created a new foundation underneath it with flood vents. You see the flood vents down here at the bottom. And then didn't leave it with that lovely cinder block, painted it, landscaped it, and you can see on the right what it looked like afterwards. So it's not this horrific, we're going to make it look like Sandbridge thing. You can make it fit in with the historic district. This is right down on Dinwiddie Street. And you can make it so that it looks like it fits in. And that's where we talked about, do you want to have design guidelines? Because there weren't any, other than, you know. Yeah, so they elevated up, they separated from the foundations, they build up with what they call cribbing underneath, raise it up, build a new foundation underneath, and then they jack it up, like with car jack. They have a whole bunch of those, they jack it up, they build the foundation, and then they lower it back down, connect everything back. Obviously, people can't live in the house while you're doing that, so they've got to have somewhere else to go. You can also relocate structures. Again, maybe in a historic district, not exactly what you want to do, but you can relocate small houses, you can relocate large structures. People will say, oh, that's too big to move. So usually, I show them this picture. I figure if you can move that, you can move anything. It's just a matter of course. So anything can be moved. Again, it may or may not be what you, is your prime thing to do, but, but you can relocate and get it out of that. You know, one of the reasons they relocated the lighthouses, also there was erosion, which we're not necessarily having. But, you know, now it's, you know, 1,000 feet down the road and, and it's, it's safe, if they can keep the light burning. So for non-residential structures, you can also have the option to do flood barriers or flood gates or flood doors in front of the doors or windows of the structure that might be in the flood zone. They can be temporary, whether you just put them out when there's an event. The trouble with that is that if it happens in the middle of the night, no one's there, you know, that, that's not going to protect your structure. It can be automatic, it can be permanent. That, that one there, I think is a hospital, so they flip the door up. And, and again, you don't want people to be inside the structure when you flip the door, because if it catches on fire or whatever, they can't get out. So the idea is you evacuate the structure, which is why you can't do this for residential, because people got to live. But there are some fairly attractive ones. I really like this glass one down there, I'm not sure where that is. So it can be a permanent installation, and it provides that level of benefit to that structure. It's not going to flood up to, you know, whatever level that is. And it can protect, you know, one structure, it can protect a whole, you know, bunch of openings. You know, the smaller ones, you're only talking about a couple thousand dollars to, you know, to protect like a threshold. You know, obviously, for some of these larger ones, it would be a little bit more of an investment. So the Downtown Design Committee and the Historic Preservation Committee haven't, Commission haven't asked us yet, although we think maybe they're leaning in that direction, for some assistance. But we're ready to help them should they decide that, you know, because again, I tell people, I don't care what it looks like, it just has to be functional. But in a historic district, you don't want some institutional looking thing protecting the door. And there may be a decision that if it's a temporary thing, it's only going to be out there during an event, maybe you don't care what it looks like, because it's, you know, it's just going to be, it's better than sandbags. So we're ready if they have, if they want to move forward, which we anticipate that they probably will. Because it's going to keep happening, it's not going away. And with that, I will answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Right.
When they're ready, why isn't the city ready?
Well, we're, we're ready to help them, it's up to those committees to, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, why, why don't the city go to them and say, this is what you need to do?
Well, we have. I, I briefed both those commissions, both those, that committee and that commission, but it's up to them to, to alter their, their guidelines. We can't tell them to, to update their guidelines. But I briefed them with, with a similar presentation to this, to explain that this is going to keep happening, and it does. And so, you know, we're going to keep talking to them about that, absolutely, yes, sir.
Does FEMA offer any assistance for somebody who's going to raise their house as a proactive move, as opposed to doing it after the fact? Because I, in addition to the one in Old Town, I know we've had a couple that were raised over off of King Street area, and it's just like in the city of Pecoson, they've almost raised every house there.
So there's a few different programs. The, the program that Pecoson has been using is, is a very difficult one to navigate through FEMA. Takes four to five years, once a project is identified, to where it's going to be done. Virginia Beach actually just stopped doing it because they had to spend, because you have to procure it yourself. The homeowner can't go directly to FEMA, it has to go through the locality. They had to spend about $100,000 of their own money to fix a cracked foundation that had gotten elevated on one of these houses. So you have to sort of decide, do you want to be in that liability loop? On King Street, what happened there is there's something called ICC, which is Increased Cost of Compliance Coverage, that people have through their flood insurance. And if they have what's called a substantially damaged structure, which is more than 50% of the value of the structure, not including the land, they can actually make an additional claim through their flood insurance and get up to $30,000 additional to raise their house. The only thing the city has to do in that case is, is write a letter and declare that it's a substantial improvement or substantial damage, and then make sure that it's elevated. And that's how those ones on King Street were done. They're at a pretty precarious location. Virginia Beach is trying to get FEMA to change the program where people could go directly to, you know, and contract out themselves. Because as it is now, the city has to contract it out, which again is, yeah, it is weird. It's, I guess it's to make you responsible, because we're the sub-recipient to go. So it's, even though they have determined that between $4 and $6 is saved in, in losses for every dollar you spend, it's still difficult to get that money. And like I said, they've done the research and said, you spend $4, spend a dollar, you're going to save $4. And, and after Matthew, they actually said that it was six in most cases. For every dollar, federal dollar that was spent, they save $6 in future losses. But it's still very difficult to go through that process. And you've got to manage it along the way. And like I said, the people have to not be in their house and...
Is that something that we could address regionally, as far as legislative change? You know, have something changed as far as FEMA's process? Because it doesn't just affect us, it's this entire area.
The NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program, is right now in Congress, has been there since December to get reauthorized, and they have not yet passed that reauthorization. And what I just heard on Friday at a meeting was that it looks like they're probably just going to adopt, have it just go forward the way that it was and not change anything. Because as you're probably aware, it's, you know, it's difficult to get things changed through the federal government. It's, you know. But I'm hoping after, you know, particularly with Matthew, where it was a lot of people who didn't have flood insurance, that maybe they'll start, they've been starting to see that...
You need it.
You need something different. You need it to be an easier process, you know. And, and we all understand that you have to be responsible with public dollars, but the process now is very overly cumbersome.
Picking up on Nate's comment about regional effort with council's concurrence, can we ask the city manager to bring this up at your manager's meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Other questions? On Brian's presentation, he said that you've worked hard to get us to Class 7. What does it take to go to Class 8?
So it goes in the other direction, 6 is better than, than, than 7? It's kind of like, I tell people, it's kind of like football and basketball rankings, number one is the best, and number 10 is, is the not as good.
Ask my question again. What does it take to get to 6?
So it's, it's a big leap. It's an exponential leap to get from 7 to 6. My understanding is the very first thing you have to do is your building code has to be graded a 5 out of 5. And I think ours now is, is a 4.4, which is a very good rating. But that's the first thing, and, and I'm not the building official, so I don't know what is involved in doing that. So there's, you know, what, to me, the worst thing you can do is stretch to get to 1 and not be able to maintain it, because then, when the people are no longer getting the deduction, the phone's going to ring. There are only six other 7, Class 7s in Virginia, I do believe. And I think there are two, or maybe three Class 6s, because I think Falls Church has just got to be one. So it's, it's, it's difficult. There's only one Class 1 in the entire country. It was some small town in California, they just moved all the houses out of flood zone. Which I don't think is, of all the mitigation strategies, I'm really sure that's practical in Portsmouth.
Top of the mountain. Well, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Mayor, members of council, we'll have our last presentation this evening. Our Director of Planning, Mr. Baldwin, will come forward regarding zoning ordinance update. During this presentation, he will call to your attention also the documents that you received on Friday, three articles and documentation that will be referred to over the course of his returning and talking about the zoning update.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. And good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Semus, Chairman Williams, and council members, members of the Planning Commission. Certainly my pleasure to be in front of all of you tonight to give you an update on the progress we're making with our zoning ordinance. Before I get started, I'll make one mention. Every, any document that I mentioned during the presentation tonight is on our planning department webpage under Special Projects, under Zoning. So if anyone wants to look at any of the maps or studies or anything that I reference, those are available online. We passed out to you just a larger series of these maps. This is also included in the PowerPoint presentation, but if you're like me, you like to look at the map a little bit larger scale than what you may have in your package. So we opted to get you a larger version of that. So we're going to try to cover three basic elements tonight. Number one, we're just going to give you a basic project status update. We've been at this for some while, so we want to give you an update on where we are. We also know we started this at council's insistence to do something with the D2 district, and we have a proposal that we'll, we'll talk about in a few minutes, and what we would like to recommend moving forward with that district. And then we'll talk about what we would have as next steps in the process moving forward from where we are today. I like to do this as a reminder. Got Mr. Hartley with, with me here tonight, he's our project manager, working on the zoning. We both have this hanging in our offices, kind of keeps us focused on what we believe council's primary directions were. As you know, our existing zoning ordinance is in three pieces. There's the primary zoning ordinance, there's the D1 appendix, which hand, which is most of downtown. We have our D2 form-based code. And as you can imagine, it presents a lot of challenges. We have differing definitions of things. So again, that's been a kind of a challenge. We want to obviously eliminate unnecessary regulations and requirements. I know that was part of the conversation earlier with the Timmons Group, talking about, you know, being, being ready for development. Certainly want to play a part in that process. And again, we wanted to eliminate the, the D1 smart code and the D2 form-based code, our two design districts, moving forward. I will mention one other thing. If you go back and look at any of the documents from back in 2008, you'll see almost the same list. I think you'll see that that, we apparently missed the mark when this was being done before. I always tell you that there's a goal, and then there's an implementation or regulatory element to this, and the rubber meets the road when you write the regulations. So keep in mind, as we're trying to, that that's the goal as we write regulations. First thing, this is one of the documents that was delivered to the Planning Commissioners and City Council, I believe, last week. Not going to go into any detail, this is a 42-page document, I believe. This is the Land Use Policy Analysis, Zoning Ordinance Evaluation. And this document has two or three things in it, we'll get to it. Provides the narrative, what we, what we did when we started the project. You know, we'd had a number of years of, of experience working with the zoning ordinance. We've had a number of years of getting comments back from property owners, developers, council members, planning commissioners, you name it. So we've tried to capture a lot of that into this document. So the three pieces that are in that narrative, it's the overview and recommendations, it's sort of like, sort of like the roadmap to where a future zoning ordinance ought to go. It has that, what we call a diagnostic matrix. One of the things we wanted to do was take a look at our zoning ordinance, compare it back against state enabling legislation, or where we're at. Dillon's Rule State, and we are required to follow what the, the state has given us as enabling legislation. And we had a number of concerns that some of the elements on our current zoning ordinance either were not fully compliant, maybe not compliant at all. So we just want to go through the whole list. Anywhere there's a state-enabling requirement, we want to look at that and capture that to make sure that if we rewrite the code, we, we capture all of those things. And then there's just a di, what we call a diagnostic matrix, diagnostic matrix. And that really is just the, here's all those other things that everybody said we ought to be working on, let's capture all that. So we want to have a document that you can refer to, councilmen, planning commissioners can look to and see, you know, what, what was identified at the, at the beginning of the, of the project. So where we are, our status report, as you're aware, we've completed the revisions to the parking and sign provisions, those have come to council already. Keep in mind, part of what we did in those were to take some of the parking and the sign provisions that were in the D1 and D2 and roll those back into there. So that was part of the dismantling of the D1 and T2 districts. Obviously, with a goal to get to a single ordinance, and so we've been working on that. One of the other documents I provided you, I was providing you last week is the Use Table. That's not the one that's in the ordinance, we provided what we call, it's a, it's a full use table, includes the D1 and D2. Everything's in, in one district. And when we come back in the future for discussion on, you know, permitted by right versus used permit uses, that's all covered in that table. So when you get, put that in your hands, so you can see what a unified use table would look like. So that's what that document was all about. Where we're also working, what we call our foundational elements, and this is the stuff that I would say is, you know, the not sexy part of writing zoning code. But we have to get our organization and format of this code. We're trying to be organized, user-friendly, so we're trying to get that part straight. We get our administration pieces straight, you know, what the zoning administrator does, what the Planning Commission does, what the Board of Zoning Appeals does, what City Council does, what the Planning Director does. Get a nice, clear, clean section in there. One of the problems in our current code, we have a lot of different people, all sorts, the authority's been chopped all up, and it's very difficult to kind of maneuver through, so we're trying to clean that all up. One of the more important things we're doing is what we call the definitions and uses. Obviously, if you want to sit down and we want to start talking about what's in that use table, we need to know what the definition, definition of that use. And so we're, again, we've had, because of the way the ordinance was put together for, in some cases, same use, different terms, same use, different definitions. Trying to clean that up. In some cases, we have definitions that aren't clear to the user exactly what that means. And I'm sure over the, over the last years, there've been times you've wondered, we'll get into discussions about what's a warehouse and what's a distribution center, what's the difference between the two? And so if your code is trying to split hairs and fine tune those, you end up with a lot of arguments about making zoning interpretations, and we certainly don't want to be doing that. And then the other one you just mentioned, that's a really important element of any zoning ordinance, you probably don't spend enough time talking about it, but it'll come up, we talked about the D2 in a few minutes, this issue of non-conformities. And we really have, what we would, I would classify as three basic types of non-conformities that we deal with in our code. You have non-conforming uses. And that might be a case where somebody was conducting a use, and say the zoning ordinance changed, or their property got rezoned, and that use was no longer permitted where they are. Now they are sitting in a, in a non-conforming use status, and we do have regulations to deal with that. And just bear in mind, when you classify something as non-conforming, the intent is to make them go away. So I think people ought to understand that the intent in a zoning ordinance, when you start classifying it as non-conforming, you want people to be conforming. So it becomes very difficult for people to make investments in their properties or expand uses if they are in a non-conforming status. And there's some rules about that, and we'll talk about that as we go forward. We have non-conforming structures. And, and again, that's something to get into, where you have setbacks that you don't meet. Maybe you've got encroachments into, or lack of landscaping. And we have a third category, it's kind of wrapped up in this, what we call non-conforming side aspects. And that's really become a problematic issue for a lot of repurposing and redeveloping businesses, where you've got an old building, give as an example, you've got an old building, doesn't have a paved parking lot, doesn't have landscaping, doesn't have all those site requirements we would normally apply on a, on a new use. And so there's triggers that are built into our current zoning ordinance about how much improvement developers have to make to try to bring all those site aspects up to par. And you can imagine, if you had to rebuild an entire parking lot in a larger space, that gets pretty, pretty pricey. And what we have seen is, in fact, developers pulling back on the amount of investment they want to make to try to stay down below our thresholds. So instead of your thresholds being triggers to do something, they become ceilings upon which people don't want to go over, because they don't want to get hit with more expensive site modifications. And that's a very important part of what we'll get to in a future discussion as we go through that. Back to our issue in these foundational elements, we have working drafts, staff's working on it. We build sort of that formation, or that's not getting into some of these other details we get to with the use table and, and all of that. So that's kind of where we're going. One of the things we've done, we've laid out a slightly revised organizational structure, what the, what the ordinance will look like, so it's going to have basically these six different, different articles. Pretty straightforward, you can see the general provisions, the administration, and the definitions pieces are all kind of standard things we have to have. pieces are all kind of standard things we have to have. The places we want to spend more time having future discussions, dealing with our zoning districts, the zoning uses. The section we call community design, that's all of our development standards, our landscaping, lighting, signage, a number of those kind of issues. And then, of course, I just mentioned earlier, we'll deal with non-conformities. And so that's going to be a future work session, sort of a roll-up-your-sleeves work session. Everybody clear on kind of where we are with that? So I'm going to move into the D2 district. And that's where the series of maps will come into play. But I kind of walked you, as you're aware, this uptown area has had, over the years of existence, it's had mixed uses in there. And quite frankly, a lot of them have been changed over. They used to have a lot of car dealerships, a lot of light industrial type of repair facilities or locksmiths, glass companies, you name it. So that was a lot of the historical use. Over time, you know, a lot of those uses have gone out of business. We've been left with a lot of vacant or underutilized properties out there. Back when this issue was confronted back in 2010, creating the zoning ordinance, the decision was made then to do the form-based code, try to come up with a new plan. And so the D2 district is kind of based on a couple of things. Number one, if you may recall, we used to have design districts that covered both all of D1 and D2. By going to the form-based code, the area of the Development Review Committee got shrunken down significantly. The replacement for not going through that kind of design review was form-based codes, which are prescriptive design elements. I think you've heard a lot about those in our form-based code. Very specific discussions on how tall your first floor needs to be and how your windows are supposed to be placed, things of that nature. And one of the other attempts in this thing was to minimize use permits by making more things permitted by right, as they would typically phrase this, as being more form-based than use-based. And so that was really the intent of the form-based code. Again, it has very prescriptive design requirements. Unfortunately, one of the impacts of doing it was, that last bullet, an increase in non-conforming structures and uses. So we're going to walk through your maps, and take you on a little zoning journey here. So this is your D2 form-based code. This is what's in place today. And I'm just going to go through these relatively quickly. Again, you can read these at home if you'd like. But the important thing to take a look at here, I'd like you to focus on all that you see in that yellow color. That's the general urban.
It actually starts at Green and not Effingham?
Yeah, yeah. And it's a jagged district. And we'll show you a little bit more on that. But there's some problems between our D1 and D2 on the interface that got off a little bit when they got put together. That yellow, and that's general urban. This is an interesting approach that was done here, because it's a combination of a plan and a regulating plan at the same time. So you see elements in here like this park in the middle of London, as an example, kind of unusual. But a lot of the intent of the form-based code was to be more pedestrian-oriented, trying to slow cars down, reduce street widths. What you see down there in the blue is predominantly like townhouses and small apartments, more of a residential as it moves down on that area, down towards County Street, down towards Columbia. So that's the current form-based code zoning. You recall, during the time we worked on the comprehensive plan, this was presented to council previously, we had our consulting firm of MDC work with us to do a land use plan. We thought if we're going to build the zone, and we had to start at ground level. So this was an existing land use map that was put together during the course of their project. And I guess the thing I'd point out to you is, you can see the sort of the choppy nature of land uses. When you start seeing red in there, that's primarily commercial sites. And you know, from the prior form-based code, you saw a lot of general urban, which was predominantly commercial first floor with residential above it. So obviously, you've got a different existing land use pattern. So this is where, as time went by and we came out of recession, we started seeing people running into having issues of non-conformity with what they actually had on the ground with what the form-based code, land uses was telling them to do. And because they were non-conforming, and the intent was to make them go away, triggering redevelopment. And almost all of these, it was a, became a very hard line between reuse and redevelopment. In most cases, more for redevelopment. So that's the existing land use. And a lot of them have been some discussion about going back to the old zoning that shows you the next problem you have here. All that in purple, you see is light industrial. So if you looked at your old D2 zoning, it doesn't either, it doesn't match the land use, it doesn't match the form-based code. And you did have some mixes in this district, but this pretty much left the design committee pretty much, you know, one parcel, one project at a time, trying to work their way through the zoning. So clearly, we've got a mismatch here between the old zoning and the land uses as were shown prior to that. So again, working with MDC and with a fair amount of neighborhood engagement, trying to organize the future land uses out there, and something you could use as a baseline to create new zoning out here. So this is your D2 district, future land use. Again, this comes from the MDC D2 land use plan. And here you see they're starting to organize more of that commercial you start to see in the red. You start to see a little bit, a different handling of mixed-use residential along the boundaries there. And then you get, as you get further to the western edge, you start to see again more of the light industrial out towards the western side of the New Martin Luther King Expressway there. So that's, again, a land use plan. It takes into consideration what's on the ground, what the property owners indicated they thought the market was and what they would want to do. And again, trying to put into a cohesive land use concept to build zoning around. So we obviously want to have a base plan to start doing the zoning.
Can you explain the term mixed-use employment?
Yeah, and mixed-use employment is really, it's a mixed use, again, it allows that mix of residential and commercial, but it's really a little more of an intent towards the commercial side with more employment uses built in. Again, you're talking about a form-based district. And so almost all of our mixed use in the D2, the mix is residential with commercial. So if you're back on that, and if you're looking, if you're talking about the future land use map, it's kind of getting that same thing, places where you could again have mixed uses. And I'd mentioned back in the former zoning, even in the, like the IL, they had, there were some mixes built into that zoning, trying to take into consideration existing land uses with a predominant light industrial flavor to, let's say, a block or a larger land area. So head towards what we've got, we're talking about what we're proposing moving forward, and the recommendation the staff has is to go back into our zoning ordinance and apply, as opposed to having a form-based code or something like that, we'll go back and we want to apply standard zoning. I think that's part of our conversation we've been having about using more traditional zoning designations for these properties that match up. So I'll get to that map in one second. But we basically have four different districts that we're identifying to start with in here. One is general mixed use, and that's from the city's, again, regular zoning. We have neighborhood mixed use, which is a lighter intensity mixed-use district. Urban residential, which again is primarily residential, but with a higher density and some other uses mixed in, again, and light industrial. And then what we're going to propose is to go on top of that, and this is a more traditional zoning technique to do an overlay district. We have overlay districts that are actually listed in our current zoning ordinance. And there's some citywide overlays, you may not consider that. Our Chesapeake Bay regulations are an overlay, our flood districts are an overlay to the zoning. And so we want to use an overlay where we can get into some of those fine-tuning issues, because as we went through a lot of the land uses, you find that with the size of the land area in the D2, that, you know, what works in one block may not work all the way down. And so we need to find a way to tweak some of these things. So, you know, we're trying to minimize the negative impact on property owners and try to make their properties be market, more market matching than in conflict. So this is what the proposed D2 zoning would look like, we would recommend. Again, you'll see up along the London Boulevard quarter, I think everyone kind of recognizes that looks like general mixed use. We've got a number of auto-oriented businesses up there, fast food restaurants, commercial shopping centers. Within our GMU district, we also allow multifamily development with a use permit. That's more of a general mixed-use district. As you move away from that, as you move south of that and west, we propose the neighborhood mixed use. Again, that's a lower intensity mixed-use district, kind of taking the flavor of what all is in that D2 district. It would allow more flexibility for property owners in there. It'd allow, again, mixed-use, commercial, that's more neighborhood compatible, as opposed to being as car-centric. Also allows some additional housing, including single-family in the neighborhood, mixed use. Again, we show the light industrial back out here to the west and along that southern boundary, along County. We've already had council do some rezonings down there to get back, if you remember the gentleman with the insulation, the ship insulation business is down in that area down there. So we're recognizing that near the railroad as being more of an industrial. So that's the zoning concept we've kind of put together to break that district down. One thing that happens in this concept, as opposed to under the form-based code, this puts people back into a parcel-based zoning district. This allows people to come in and ask to rezone, like they have something they want to do on their specific parcel without involving the whole street or properties across the street or next door. All of that we were getting to with the form-based code. So this would allow individuals then to, if they felt like they had something they wanted to come in and would not fit, they could actually ask for it.
Picking up on what you just said is, what's the current trend in spot zoning as far as, well, the not, a particular spot zoning is legal or not legal?
As far as spot zoning?
Yes.
Well, I think, I'll answer that two ways. One, I would say that in Virginia, the city council, when they're taking legislative action, you get broad discretion on what council thinks is appropriate. That's one of the reasons Virginia, for example, does not require an exact match between your comprehensive plan, future land use map, and decisions council makes. So we would typically discourage spot zoning, and you'd see there from the staff, and we think this looks like spot zoning from the council's perspective. My personal opinion is, you have all the authority in the world to rezone property if you think it's the most appropriate. And that's, you know, again, Virginia, the courts, and I'm not an attorney, but I will say from my experience, you have broad discretion to city council for making decisions for their community.
Speaking of city councils making decisions, on all of this, I'm assuming that there's a vehicle to appeal a decision along the way. We won't have the issues we've had before where there was no one to ask if you didn't like the answer?
Well, here's what I would say, this is going to be more like standard zoning. Okay, so first of all, as opposed before, when we were getting a lot of tangle in interpretation, that's going to be a lot simpler. And in fact, one of the things we'll tell you is, once we get this done, you know, back to what I just mentioned, we come back later, working through that use table, want the council to be very clear that you understand like what's in this GMU, and what's in an NMU, and whether you think this is appropriate by right, or you think it needs a use permit or something else. We will, as part of that overlay, be recommending some design standards that will be part of the discussion with council on, you know, what your intentions will be. And I can just give you an example, under the form-based code and as under the old zoning. I think you recognize there's a difference between what's on High Street and what's on London. I think you're aware in our current zoning, it's had to come before council, where we don't allow any internally illuminated signs. You may recall, you had a McDonald's application, they wanted to change their signs, and that required them to go through, all the way through the process, like a use permit to request internally illuminated signs on buildings that already had internally illuminated signs in a roadway that was full of internally illuminated signs. So we want to try to go in there and fine-tune and say, okay, if London Boulevard is a place that's got these kind of signs, that might be the appropriate sign, whether it be a monument sign, internally illuminated sign, whatever the case may be. However, you may want to take a look at High Street and go, well, as we're moving west down High Street, you kind of like to keep the flavor more like what we have in the lower part of High Street. So we might stick there with, you know, indirect lighting, not internally illuminated, that type of thing. So we want to work to fine-tune those. So you're going to have enough, what I would say is, what you're trying to get to, and I kind of use the, you know, trying to get to a just-right standard, you know, trying to balance, you know, where you're trying to get. But what is going to get you what you're trying to get out there without going to the distance like the form-based code was trying to do? But how much flexibility you want to give to a developer to come in and individually decide, well, I want to put a big, you know, Cracker Barrel sign up on my parcel, and I think that's appropriate for me. And so, you know, we're going to take a look at some of those. So we're going to have some areas we want to go in and try to fine-tune it through this overlay. And as another example, you know, we have some areas, we get down in the High Street, as you get closer towards Effingham, where there's no parking. And so we've already had to do some tweaking in the past, trying to get them out of the parking requirement when clearly there's no parking onsite, across the street, down the block. So we need to take a look at those districts and find out, just like you might have in the D1, should the city be looking at creating some sort of a parking zone, try to assist those properties, a surface lot, for example. But as you move further west, where there's more land available, try to have the more traditional approach of having property owners both use onsite parking and maybe on-street parking in appropriate locations. So it might be a little bit different standard. That overlay district is going to allow you to fine-tune those areas and what you're trying to match. Again, where you're trying to go, plus what's on the ground. So we're trying to minimize the non-conformities, we're trying to stop the road blocking. I think that's Vice Mayor's question, trying to get away from that and have clear paths for people.
Say yes and not everything being that.
Right. In most cases, what we're trying to do is avoid having them have to come to council asking how to change, you know, the lighting or change a sign. That is absolutely basic zoning 101 business. Unless somebody wants to do something really outside the norm, this should not be an issue that city council spends a lot of time looking at. It's just not really, you think about it when you do your zoning ordinance, not, you know, site by site, can I have a, can I have a sign kind of a question? That's really not a, to me, that's a zoning ordinance that has more problems than it has good. But that's how we had to do that patch, to give people a way to amend all those design standards we're built in. We're certainly going to try to avoid a lot of the issues that happen. And you're, I think, aware that one of the things that happened in this process, we used to have this type-two site plan process that was created. And always, another phrase I like to use is, you know, love your standards. It means if you want to put a standard in place, you know, city council needs to say, that's my standard, and except on rare occasions, I need to modify. So if you make a mistake, you fix it. So, you know, we got a situation in those type-two site plans where developers could come in and ask the planning commission to make all sorts of modifications to all the requirements in the code. And every site plan we had was going through that process. In essence, you really had no standards. You had a planning commission now being put in a position of getting four, five, six different site items, whether it be setbacks or glazing on the window, whatever the case may be. And of course, once the developer realizes, it's the same process to ask for five as they ask for one, I'll ask for five. And so you ended up with a lot of your standards in your zoning works really not being that much of a standard, more of a suggestion, which is not helpful from a zoning perspective. We're trying to say this is council's standard. So that's what we're trying to work to, and want to make sure council's engaged in those conversations, so you know what's being put in there when you see it or hear it, and what the problem is. So we're trying to be very cognizant of being, you know, friendly to the developer, also aware of their impact on their neighbors as well. So that's the concept. So it's basically starting here. What we would propose to do with council is comfortable starting out here. During the course of the D2 land use planning process, we had a number of meetings with the community out there to talk about the land use plan, and we proposed to go back out there and share this with the property owners and people who live in the area, and basically see if this is in line with what, you know, they were understanding and suggesting as we went through that planning process before we get too far down the road. But we think this matches up with getting out of that form-based code and going back to a more traditional zoning process. And again, keeping in mind, when we go back to that use table, you'll get another chance to go back through and decide, you know, how to fine-tune. You also can do it in the overlay district. So you may think there are uses in here that are, say, allowed in the GMU, you don't think are appropriate on London, and you have the ability in the overlay to say, I just don't want those uses MIP in there.
The mayor may have already set this up, but we have talked off sidebar about use permits. And are we going to have a time to have a conversation about use permits, you know, when we think they're appropriate and when we really shouldn't be having them?
Let me mention one other document you were giving. Answer question, yes. As far as we're concerned, that's a work session requirement. Council's got to tell us, you know, these are the uses we think are impactful, we need to look at them. Those are the ones that are, you know, we want people to just, you know, buy right.
If it's done that way, it's coming back.
I'll mention one of the things that we provided you, just to show you what happened in the current.
While you were speaking about the use permit and the use table, in our executive brief, the use table that was included in the packet, is that showing, that's showing the recommended change or?
It's showing exactly as it is today.
As it is today.
What we did was, we took the D1 What we did was, we took the D1, D2, and the regular zone, we put them all in one table, so you could see the broad, and one of the things you'll see in there, you'll start to see in the D2 places where it's the only place that's using terminology, like, we might be talking about a restaurant, and they might be talking about an eating establishment and stuff like, stuff like that. So, that's a combined, that's no recommended changes at all.
So, as we progress, will you show us the changes some way highlight when it's moving from use to permitted by right?
Yes, if I get to my next slide here, that's exactly what I'd like to, how I'd like to engage with council on that. What I was going to mention is, in the, some of the information you were given last Friday, you saw, you had another piece of paper showed separation standards. And if you looked in there, I think there's 26 or something on the list, I can tell there's others that are buried in this ordinance other than those, but those are the ones we've, you know, encountered pretty regularly. Those were put in place to replace, going through a use permit process, to protect properties around businesses that were thought to need a use, that normally would, might have needed a use permit. That has been one of your biggest obstacles to development in our entire ordinance. Time and time again, this is a very compact city. We've got zoning where industrial uses and commercial uses and residential uses, they're very close to each other. Getting 500 feet away from somebody or 250 feet away from, just doesn't work very well. Your interchange building had to go through Board of Zoning Appeals because of that exact problem. I think we've probably had five different businesses have to go through Board of Zoning, and quite frankly, the Board of Zoning Appeals get full within their authority to say, this is a code problem, this is not a, this is not a variance problem, this is not a problem with their property, this is a problem with the code. We recognize that. But I want you to see that list, to see what the code did to address that. We don't need any use permits, we'll just drop these standards in there. So, you have to be careful, you know, that your fix isn't worse than what you're trying to repair. So, back to Dr. Whittaker's question, just move on, I'll move off of this, this is...
Bill's having a question. Just a quick question, when we had that conversation about the use permits, I think it would be helpful to have what other, what our neighbors, what kind of categories they require as well.
I'll mention one thing, there's a difference in Virginia, say, in North Carolina, but way, you know, if you think about your code, when you put something as a use in a zoning ordinance with a use permit requirement, the general concept is, we have a problem with that, that you have to mitigate. As opposed to, like in North Carolina, they say, that's considered permitted as long as you don't violate these four, you know, other criteria, like you're not affecting someone's property values or what have you. So, there's a difference in mindset, use permit from state to state is not the same, and from locality to locality is not the same. But keep in mind, that's kind of the idea, is it must be something impacted with this use that needs a use permit, otherwise we wouldn't require them to get one. And so, again, the way the current code was trying to address that was by putting in standards into the zoning code, prescriptive standards, that would take the place of going through the use permit. We're just finding that wasn't a...
Killed everything.
It was. That was exactly, that's probably your biggest, biggest problem there. So, again, I was mentioning our overlay district, and these are some things we were looking at, appropriate and inappropriate uses, your setbacks and building density, locations for parking, landscaping, all that stuff's a standard in our zoning ordinance, looking at landscaping, streetscaving, signage. You have the ability to fine-tune it within that D2, since that has historically been a design-reviewed district. So, we thought council may want to at least consent, consider maintaining some of that within that district. Hopefully, as it redevelops, you'll have the right kind of standards to apply to it.
Nice.
So...
Next step.
Next steps in the D2, and with the rest of the zoning ordinance, obviously, we want to go through the foundational pieces, and that's the stuff really for us, it's getting the legal stuff in there, all of our operational requirements in there, how we enforce, who does what. And then for future work sessions, Dr. Whittaker, this is back to Whittaker, so we want to talk about the D1 district, we have to have a similar, it's not quite as bad of a problem in the D1, but similar conversation. We want to look at that use table, and that's going to be permitted or requiring use permits or whatever else. The development, use-specific standards, what is it about a drive-through that you want to regulate? What is it about multifamily we're regulating? You know, what is it about convenience stores with gas pumps, something currently on your plate? All of those things are council prerogatives, whether you think they're needing to be by right or the use permit, and by whatever district. Some districts you might say, hey, no problem, go ahead and go for it, that's an industrial district, you can do that all day long. You may also allow that maybe in a general mixed-use, but I think, well, that's got some other uses around it, it might be a little bit less compatible, we might want to have a use permit for it. So, it's, it's really building, and what I always tell people is, you need to think about what your philosophy is, you know, what you're trying to accomplish philosophically. Our current ordinance was trying to urbanize, I think we can all see that. It felt suburban, it feels suburban development was what's wrong with the prior zonings, we had to get away from suburban development, so we had to have smaller lots, more mixed-use, higher standards, because we're getting kind of packed in. So, those were philosophical elements. You know, one thing about a zoning ordinance, it's not just a regulation to regulate, these things carry your philosophy of development. And so, you need to really be thinking about, you hear, again, our earlier presentation about being sites, having sites ready and ready to go, but you also have to remember there are people who live or drive or have other businesses around those sites. And so, you have to think, do I, am I worried about that or not? It depends on location, and if, and if you want to say, well, if it was 200 feet away, I don't have a problem, you have to think about whether you do or don't. And again, just sort of pointing out how the current code tried to address some of those issues, and unfortunately, it's really had a slamming-the-door kind of an impact, and made quite a challenge for our economic development staff to get sites that'll work without running into some sort of a prescriptive standard. And generally, the standard is, you know, it's intended to be, I tell the developer what the requirement is, he'll just go do it. But in this case, either they said, I'm not going to do it, it's too high of a standard, or I can't do it, you know, there's, and I use, you know, some things we have about, you know, plumbing companies that we have in town, they're having separation stand, they want to expand, like, hold on, you know, you're on Porcell Boulevard, and there's a neighborhood back there behind you, and you have a separation standard you can't comply with. And so, those things are terrible. I'll just tell you, it's the bane of our existence going through all of those things. And so, there are some things, the state mandates, I'll tell you right off the bat, there are going to be separation standards that come out of the state code, you know, again, mention where Dillon, Dillon's Rule locality. So, if the state tells us you have to have a setback between certain uses in schools or daycare centers, whatever, that's what you're going to see primarily, and then we'll want to take a good, hard look at any other separation standards. We believe there are better ways to mitigate than just separation.
Okay.
So, we're all in accord.
Yes.
It's good zoning practices.
That this thing...
Yeah, that's good zoning practice. So, we come back, here are the things we really need to get council's input on. We'll look at the D1 district, and again, I think that's not going to be as complicated. Some of it is fixing some of the densities that got built, and I'll tell you one last quick story in our D1 district, an unusual way of establishing densities in the sub-districts. And they basically took the, a market analysis that projected residential development over time, to 20 years, and then divided it up and said, that's our zoning density, and that's just not normal practice. This is a land use thing, this is not a distribution thing. So, we ended up with a lot of, the downtown density's being much lower than what's around it, because their share of units was cut, because so much of it was heading down to the waterfront side. So, if you had high density on the waterfront side, the amount of units you could distribute everywhere else got lower. So, we had an assessment done by an intern, we had very clearly pointed out the flaw in that. We want to go over the use table in some detail, that's why you have it in advance. By the time we get to you, I'll have had several weeks if you want to look through it. Pretty clearly self-explanatory, but we'd be glad to, you know, talk about that more if you'd like to. These development use-specific standards we've been talking about, you know, what kind of standards do you want to apply on certain uses? Our code has all sorts of different standards built into it. Again, there was a high degree of emphasis placed on design, form, and that design and form got put into a lot of these development standards, and when we get to that section, we'll also give you an advanced read on that, and kind of start looking through to see what the code's telling companies that they need to do. And then the last thing, we're going to spend some time, this nonconformity thing, because this really was a challenge, as you can imagine, coming out of the recession, we had an awful lot of properties that had been sitting, because there was no demand, there was no market. And then when they finally started to see a little bit of life in the economy, they hit them, you're nonconforming, you have to tear it down and start over with something that isn't exactly what you want to do. And that became a real, real issue, so.
One of the things, and Mr. Baldwin is at the end of it, one of the things we'd like tonight, before you leave, is that you give us a concurrence for our planning department can take the next steps in finalizing the proposed D2 district zoning to meet your goal, which was established from your 2017, four big things in your city council retreat, which we've continued to work on, now we're in the second year, and each of the four pieces that you have there, we will be coming back to you with each of those, so that you will have time to engage, make whatever recommendations that you would like for whatever it is that puts it in line with what your philosophies are, and...
To include a calendar for that last bullet, right?
Yes, yes. We will have a calendar. And to go...
On particular Monday night, we know we're going to discuss the use table.
Right. And I will tell you, we are committed to giving you this information well in advance.
Right.
You know, it's a lot to digest, it's not something, if you don't work with it every day, it's not normal reading.
Right.
Trust me, some of this isn't normal reading for us.
Okay.
But we want to make sure you have, you have sufficient time to look this stuff over, because you have to be able to digest it and understand what it's telling someone to do. And I would just tell you, when you look at it, look at it from a development's perspective, you know? So, if you have a piece of property, you know you're in a certain district, you can look through and find the use, and find the use table, and find the specific standard and see, is it too high a standard or too low of a standard?
What percentage of our landmass is nonconformities? I know we're already dealing with 45% of our landmass not taxable, so...
Well, we have a large amount of land that's, that's obviously got issues with, I think, tax exempt. When we did the prior conference of plan, we did an assessment, and at that time, and it was mostly in the residential areas, you had about, I think it was maybe 37, 38% of lots were nonconforming. And if you look in the way that was addressed in the current zoning code, you'll see where it establishes lot sizes or setbacks, it says, setbacks, for example, or whatever the prevailing pattern is along the street. And that was to take into consideration that, you know, the zoning might have a 20-foot front yard setback, your neighborhood might have been built at 16, and those would all be considered a nonconforming situation. And a lot of times, you also don't want people building to a standard that's not matching up with their neighbor, so the code gives you an alternative. We'll still maintain language like that, because that's a way to eliminate a nonconformity. How many people are actually sitting out there with nonconforming structures? It's, I would say, a fairly sizable number today. I couldn't give you a number, because we haven't, you know, looked at each parcel, but I can tell, for example, in the D2 district, under the current code, almost everything in that D2 district's currently nonconforming, because almost none of it was built to match up what that code says. Now, one last sort of explanation, that D2 district, one of the things that happened when it got implemented that's created a lot of this problem, there should have been an under, it should have been done as an overlay district. You should have had a base zoning under it, that would not have created all these problems. But for whatever reason, at the time the D2 was implemented, the council vacated the underlying zoning. And so, normally, the D2 stuff would have been an alternative, you just said, I can do this, or I can go through the form-based code and do something else. And unfortunately, you lost the, I can do this part and replace it with you must do that part. And it took us a while to figure it out, what had happened with that.
Okay. Dr. Patton has asked for our concurrence.
Before you get it, Mayor, let me just say this, everything we're going to do, and Mr. Baldwin mentioned, these were similar goals to back in 2008, '07, when what we're dealing with now was form. What we want to make sure is that we're going to follow this, and what we bring you, the ordinance or changes or recommendations, are going to be aligned with the goals. We're not showing you the goals and going off and do something else. So, with your concurrence, and we will match the goals with what we bring back to you, we will continue to move forward. A yield to the mayor and council.
Anybody have any problems with that?
Mr. Baldwin.
Anybody down here?
Okay.
You got it?
All righty. Mayor, this, yes?
Yeah, I just want to say, I see, prepare for future work sessions and this discussion, and I guess my question is, are citizen-oriented groups like downtown design, historical preservation, planning commission, will they be involved?
Yes.
Like, like it is tonight?
Yes.
Because they need to hear this, they need to hear this dialogue, they need to be up.
As Ms. Pittinger indicated, already going and presenting what they're presenting, the planning department will be working with all the groups and keeping them apprised. They've already presented to the EDA, keeping them apprised in their meeting, so we'll be going to all of those.
We want their input, we want your input.
Yeah.
Yes.
We want to hear what you say about whether or not it's used by right or used for the purpose, or used for... You know, we'll make the final decisions, and we're not all that smart from that.
And that's why we appointed them to make some decisions, but we also want to make sure that we're all...
Same thing.
We're not going to be perfect, because we're going to have our differences, opinions, it's normal, but they at least need to be hearing the same things that we are.
There's no reason they can't be invited to join our work sessions.
Sure.
Yeah, that's what we're...
That's why I got it on.